So we'll start the meeting, I'm gonna run this meeting and then when we're out in the chambers, we're gonna have the clerk open the meeting.
Yeah, and I'll just explain that the mayor and mayor pro tem aren't there and that council should make a motion to designate the interim chair.
And I'm not gonna push buttons because I can see all of you very, you can just. Um, so any changes to the agenda? Either city manager or city attorney?
I have one brief update not related to the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, so we actually have good news to share on the budget front. When we brought the budget recommendation to you, we shared that we expected our Cigna health insurance to have a fourteen point nine percent increase for both the city and employees. Um, at that time, we shared that we were gonna continue to work with our broker. Uh, partially, our stock loss insurance was was pushing that cost on the back end. We were able to work with the broker to find an alternative stop-loss provider and that has reduced the health insurance increase for Cigna to four point two percent. So that'll be both a benefit for both the city and for our employees. I believe we were informing the employee advisory committee of that last week and we'll be doing some broader communication. That is gonna result in some savings from the budget that you're gonna have second reading tonight. Not recommending that you modify the the budget at this stage. We do anticipate that that's about nine hundred thousand in savings overall. Eight hundred thousand about of that savings will come to the general fund. My plan would be to come back to the council in the first quarter with some updates. Couple of things that are on the horizon. We do have some new costs in terms of direction that was given in terms of our inclement weather sheltering. Uh, we have a new site, we're gonna incur some new security and staffing costs that weren't budgeted, so that'll give us some time to evaluate that what that's gonna look like. Um, also gives us a little bit of time to get through our organizational review implementation planning and then, you know, continue to assess economic performance. But that may create some additional capacity either to hold for next year's budget or to reallocate for other purposes probably next year. But for now, I would just recommend that we leave the budget as recommended and know that we might have some flexibility for either to address some of those unanticipated costs or some other strategic opportunities.
Nice. Anything from city attorney?
Nothing from me, thanks.
All right, go ahead and start then with the community survey discussion.
So, um, the city of Thornton historically every other year had done a citizen satisfaction survey. At the transition at the last city manager, we have, uh, we kind of fell out of that timeline, but now intend to restart that. So Rob's gonna walk you through what to expect from that process. And I, and I believe that we've, uh, have a partner from our survey consultant ETC as well, so get it to Rob.
Evening, um, Ryan Murray from ETC is with us online. Ryan, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, Rob, can you all hear me?
We can, thank you. Ryan is piping in from Kansas City, Missouri where ETC is based out of. He's, he is a Chiefs fan, so we can, um, we can hold that against him if we'd like. Thanks for joining us, Ryan. I'm, I'm actually gonna hand it over to Ryan here really quick. Uh, he's gonna do the bulk of the presentation. We're gonna start with just kind of an overview and a process of how we've typically run the survey. Um, we have, um, we've, uh, in your packet, we have a full draft survey um, for your review as well as in the presentation, we've embedded those questions. Um, it's not our intent to go question by question, but wanted to make sure that you would see the questions and if you had specific feedback or questions on the questions, um, you'd be able to see them on the presentation. And really, we're trying to get your feedback on, um, the draft survey instrument, the draft questions, so that we can, um, start the preparation for implementing the survey. Ryan will talk schedule, but, um, really the, the, um, the intent here is to try to get the survey done in time to provide some feedback, um, in the, in advance of or potentially even at the, um, the goal-setting retreat next year as kind of a feeder into that process, um, as well as, um, uh, developing an action plan out of those sort of results. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Ryan, Ryan, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. Um, if, yep, there we go. So if anybody's not familiar, um, I'm Ryan Murray. I'm the, uh, the assistant director of community research here at ETC Institute. Uh, as Rob mentioned, unfortunately, I am a Chiefs fan. Um, I had plenty of years of getting, uh, really sad feelings on Sunday from the Broncos though, so I think maybe we could move on from that, uh, hopefully, uh, for a little bit. Um, but ETC Institute is really the, the, uh, the show tonight. Um, we are the nation's leader in market research. We are based in the Kansas City area. Um, I've been with the firm for fifteen plus years. Um, I've done everything from phone calling after high school, uh, when I was a kid, uh, to, to being here tonight with you all, uh, including traveling to many of those places where you see on the screen there. And if we can go to our next slide, we'll see how our project approach kind of lines up here. And we're currently in task one where we're gonna design the survey and the sampling plan. And while the sampling plan is designed on the back end, um, we do like to always have a really collaborative process, uh, with the survey design. The sampling plan we'll discuss after we get through the survey, but we'll go ahead and administer that survey and then get into analysis and reporting on our next slide. Uh, we've got a full kind of breakdown of the, the timeline there. So, yep, there we go. So over the next couple of weeks after tonight, we'll hopefully finalize this evening. Uh, the survey, we'll begin our proof and test process. It's, it's a complicated process where we've got quality assurance and quality checks throughout. Uh, we'll do that on the paper surveys and then our team will go ahead and build the online version of the survey and we'll test all of those items out and then we'll send those back to you. It'll take us about two weeks to fully prepare. We like the client to see things just one last time before they print and mail, but nothing will change, so no substance will change. We just wanna make sure, hey, that's the final and we're ready to rock. It'll take about two weeks for those surveys to begin arriving in Thornton. Uh, USPS tells us to tell folks about twelve business days. Uh, from my experience, the Denver area, your area of the, the country from Kansas City takes about ten days uh, for those surveys to begin arriving. We'll administer the survey most likely through mid-November through the end of the year. We'll probably take breaks during that Thanksgiving and some of those December holidays just to make sure that we're not trying to hit people during those kind of sensitive times. But we also know administration can just really slow down during that time. We'll hopefully be finished by the end of the year. We'll then report and so it should be mid-January that we'll have a full report ready for you all. Our next slide, we'll see the overall kind of packet here. Uh, the first page of the survey contains about twenty-five different questions and they're split up into different groups. And so we'll, we'll look at each one of those groupings individually, uh, but they do all come in a single matrix there. We're gonna send out a cover letter with that. The cover letter you can see just behind the envelope there. It'll really explain the purpose for the survey. It'll hopefully have a call to action. It'll tell you, hey, it's really important, you've been randomly selected, please go ahead and participate. And it'll give those options to participate, including, uh, Spanish language line as well as in, is a line that suggests, hey, the survey can be, uh, taken over the phone in English and Spanish and it's also available online in English and Spanish. The QR code on the front, uh, of this particular packet is not correct, so please don't use this. This is just a sample, but we will update that QR code and get that on the envelope and that's an example of what that envelope will look like as well. If we go to our next, um, slide, this is our survey outline, just really kind of outlining the first couple of questions are for our important satisfaction analysis and we'll see all of these, but real quickly, we'll go through quality of life, communication, some engagement questions, we'll talk about your website, public safety, parks and recreation, strategic planning. And of course, one of the most important features is gonna be demographics and I'll follow up demographics with some of those, uh, methodological features that we'll be implementing in terms of administration. If we go to our next slide.
I'm sorry, Ryan, before you move on, I just wanted to highlight for council. So the, the satisfaction, the quality of life questions, um, as well as some of the, uh, public safety and parks and recreation questions, those have been fairly consistent in our prior survey instruments. Um, one of the things that ETC does, which I'm sure Ryan will highlight a little bit, is they offer benchmarking against other communities, um, as well as, um, looking at trend analysis for our own surveys. So, um, those are a couple of areas that we've, uh, traditionally and historically asked, uh, similar questions to be able to do the, the comparison benchmarking as well as the, um, trend analysis for, for Thornton specifically.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so a lot of these questions that you'll see over the next twenty-five, uh, are gonna be benchmarking questions. We'll be able to benchmark many of these, but not all of these. Uh, so this is public utilities. The next slide will be planning and development. Where we have co-compliance, some quality and variety questions and appearance of the neighborhood overall. Before we get into parks and recreation where we've got a little bit of a longer list, there's always a lot of questions there. We can benchmark many of those followed by public safety. After public safety and we've got another public safety section, we get into public infrastructure to kind of round out this first question. And then in question two on the next slide, what we're really doing is asking folks to force rank all twenty-five of those items. And what we'll do with our important satisfaction analysis is that we'll really highlight which of those items may have the biggest kind of pull or tug on future satisfaction. Where should we maybe invest, uh, for improvements in the next couple of years? And that's really what that question two is meant to do. We'll also track those questions, oh, excuse me, Rob, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna highlight the importance in satisfaction or IS analysis is, is unique because it, it takes not only what people think about the service, like from a quality standpoint, but also ranks that against how really critical or important is that in your life? So you get, you know, those ones that, that go to the top are both important as well as impactful from a satisfaction standpoint. Sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
No, you're great, yep. And, uh, questions three and four, general, uh, quality of life ratings. We've asked these questions in the past. From there, we get into a, a, a communication section where we ask about how important it is to be informed, some of those sources. And what I really like to do is, is try to force rank those sources in question seven to understand, you know, what's preferred. So are we using Thornton video news and programming, but we prefer news on the city's website? And that'll really help hopefully, uh, the communication leaders in your, uh, organization really kind of help maybe fine tune some of those efforts in the future. Before we get into communication, or excuse me, uh, continuing with communication, before we get into engagement, these are some, uh, basically are we providing enough information? So not only do we wanna understand the sources, uh, but what is the type of information that you're most looking for? And then really trying to dig in a little bit deeper this year, trying to understand which of those, um, social media accounts that we're following and there's a good list of those social media accounts there. Engagement is a list of engagement opportunities that Thornton residents might participate in. We ask if they participated and how did they rate their overall experience with those? And then continuing engagement on the next slide, we have an open-ended question. We'll analyze some of those open-ended responses, provide the verbatim ones. And then we'll ask if there's any barriers to participation and that's really a great way to begin to understand, you know, why aren't people coming up? Um, as a city councilman myself, we see a lot of the same people in our meetings. When there's big issues, we'll see a good group of people, but we are really always trying to test here locally as well, why aren't people participating more? And then in question ten D, if there's difficulties or barriers, uh, would you be more likely to participate? So should we work on eliminating some of those barriers that folks are mentioning? And question eleven, we'll talk about the city's website. Just real quickly, for these types of questions, I like to do branching logic to ensure that we don't have any kind of, uh, major, um, you know, just guessing of the responses. And then we get into public safety services where we just ask a few more yes, no questions, again with some of that branching logic there as well, yes, no, yes, no. And then did you find it to be timely and professional? Parks and recreation always gets a lot of love on our next slide from the area. Uh, folks are very active in Colorado. We do tons of park surveys, uh, throughout the state, uh, and folks really love parks and recreation. So we do wanna make sure that we provide, uh, a number of questions there. And then on the next slide, one of the big things that we'll be doing is strategic planning. That's one of the bigger questions that are a little bit newer this year, really testing some of those items. And then our last two slides for the survey, we'll see demographics and these are key demographic questions. Some of them are just more for the city like question nineteen, but we do wanna track, you know, age, years, folks have lived in the community, type of home, owner lease. On the following slide, we'll see items like language spoken in the home, um, income and race ethnicity. The factors that we can align with the Census Bureau statistics, if we go to our next slide, we wanna be able to align, and I choose race, race ethnicity because it's one of the more difficult ones. Um, this is the race ethnicity, ethnicity from the census, uh, from the most recent census, uh, ACS findings. So it's, I think, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four ACS findings compared to your twenty twenty-three survey. And you can see that we're really on target there. Um, when we ask the question like we do, we wanna stay within our margin of error. A margin of error for eight hundred completed surveys are gonna have about a three and a half percent shift. And so as long as we're kind of plus or minus three and a half percent from the census, we know that we've well represented those community members. Now, we're also going to sample your community, uh, in terms of your four wards. And so we wanna make sure, because those wards should be pretty population-based or pretty equal distribution in terms of population, we wanna make sure to set goals for each of the four wards. And that way, when we do cross tabulations, we'll have statistically significant differences between the each. And so we'll really be comparing apples to apples. Now, I know your community is pretty large, I know eight hundred surveys doesn't sound like a lot, but when we randomly sample and we select the, from the entire list of all residential addresses, a sample of folks to be contacted, that we continue to contact that group until reaching the demographic composition that matches the census, we can tell within our margin of error that three and a half percent, that our results are reliable at the ninety-five percent level of confidence. When we talk about random sampling some more, here's a little bit more information on that. I think I, uh, went through most of this. Uh, the total goal is about three point four, three point five is where I kind of round up. Uh, but if, for an example, if fifty percent of folks say yes in the survey, ninety-five out of a hundred times, that'll be fifty-three and a half or forty-six and a half, somewhere in that range. In terms of administration, we're gonna mail that survey. As I mentioned, it's gonna have toll-free numbers, it's gonna have the online website in Spanish and English. We're gonna follow up with folks via targeted social media ads, we're gonna send texts and emails. And we're also gonna have, uh, some phone calling potentially towards the end, um, if needed. Now, it's not common that we need a phone call, but I like to let folks know we may be doing that. Um, and only those folks selected for the random sample who have their responses, will have their responses counted in the final results. In terms of demographic representation, um, we saw those Census Bureau statistics. We wanna make sure that we're asking many of those questions. And if we get into our next slide there, um, we'll see participation of underserved populations. We really wanna make sure at ETC Institute that there are no barriers to participation. That includes bilingual materials, multimodal distribution. We target our outreach to those folks, we wanna be where you are, not making it difficult to participate. And then those follow-ups and reminders are gonna be kind of specific to groups as we need those survey samples to kind of fill out the two hundred per ward, but also the demographic composition of the survey or of the community. And then task three of our overall process, uh, is gonna be, we're gonna analyze the results, we're gonna verify everything. We've got a robust QA and QC process for the finalization of the results. In past years, we'll write a similar report with an executive summary and explaining the methodology. We'll have charts and graphs that'll include benchmarks as well, trends from previous surveys. We'll include the survey instrument as well as the analysis that we mentioned, that important satisfaction analysis will highlight areas with below average satisfaction and above average. The last slide shows our final deliverables, um, final survey, online link, uh, description of our sampling plan, which we just went through. Overall results delivered as frequency tables, as soon as I have the results in hand, I'll probably send those, uh, to Rob. And then we'll go ahead and develop our final report. We'll work on the final report with you all and then we'll develop cross-tabulations, uh, for staff. Um, we'll probably run a significance test on those to make sure that the, the significant differences are easy to point out. We'll typically do that based on your GIS, so we'll do it based on the four wards as well as some of those core, um, you know, key demographic questions as well. With that, I'll, I'll take any questions anybody might have about the process or ETC Institute or anything you'd like to discuss.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, I just wanted to, um, reiterate to council, it's important for us to, to ensure that this, um, survey meets your expectations. Um, as I said, we've got some, uh, historical service level satisfaction questions that we'd love to continue to consistently ask. Um, this was in the communication and I neglected to say it upfront. We did, um, use this survey, um, as an opportunity to really hone in on communications. We typically, in, in prior surveys, haven't asked, um, as many questions about communications and engagement as, um, we're, are in this draft instrument. And then as, as you'll recall, um, when we worked through the strategic plan outcome measures, um, using the resident, um, community survey to help evaluate kind of those perceptions of some of those outcome measures, that the strategic focus area was another thing that we wanted to do. And so that's another theme that we're seeing, um, in this, um, this draft instrument. So like Ryan said, we're happy to answer any questions. We can also go back to any of the, I know we, we blew through the questions pretty quick. Hopefully got a chance to, uh, take a look at the survey before, um, tonight, but happy to go back to any of the, uh, questions and get your feedback, um, before we finalize the survey.
Questions? Justin?
Uh, so the last one was in twenty twenty-three, how frequently, we typically conduct these surveys?
We were on about an every other year, uh, rhythm. Uh, we did one in twenty seventeen, we did one at the end of twenty twenty, beginning of twenty twenty-one. I think the pandemic got us a little posed up on that cycle. And then we did one in twenty-three and then we did one in twenty-four, but it was performance art focused. It wasn't a full community survey.
And I, I know you've mentioned some things about tying them into the strategic plan. Will the, some of these questions or metrics on the survey be some of the outcome measures that we use directly?
Yes, yes, there are, there are verbatim, I wanna say about a dozen questions that were pulled directly from the strategic planning discussion outcome measures and inserted into the survey with support from, you know, sir, uh, question design isn't, is the art of science, Brian's support to try to make sure that the question got at the end time. So, yes.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else? I think that's it, thank you.
Go. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, I'll have a great meeting.
All right, next up is review of city council pay.
So both Trisha Hinton Power and Joyce Hunt will come forward. We have, um, using similar methodology that we use on employees, have done some survey of, uh, city council compensation in the region, so, uh, they're just gonna report the findings from that analysis and write them in the next steps.
It worked. Uh, I'm, uh, the short version of this is I'm gonna provide just a little bit of background and then Tricia is going to really cover the survey because that's her area of expertise and then, uh, what the conclusions are of the survey and our recommendation. The short version of the background is that both the city charter and the state constitution is through language that from a, from my lay perspective states that you can't vote in a raise for yourself while you were in office. You can vote a raise in for the people who are elected in that November. And then two years later, whoever's elected gets that same or whatever rate that was, was in there, but you cannot vote to increase your rate, your, while you are in office. And so that's the short version of, and not the legal version of, of those two provisions. Uh, the city code actually has, uh, the charter actually provides guidance to the city code. The city code establishes the pay for the mayor, mayor pro tem and the council members. It does that by an ordinance that is adopted by city council, which amends and is then included in the code. One of the things that you should be aware of is that back in nineteen ninety-nine, the city council adopted a resolution that, um, provided that the survey would be done of, uh, our comparison cities on, as part of the budget process annually. And that is interesting, it, it established that median pay would be used for, of the city surveys to, for the basis of the comparison. So that's actually been in place since nineteen ninety-nine and it was in that, the resolution. Uh, it was in a resolution as well as an ordinance. So that, that's the background and I'm gonna turn the rest over to you unless someone has any questions.
So before we get to the actual data, the survey itself, um, as Joyce said, we do use similar methodology. We use the same, um, seven survey jurisdictions. Um, I will say Adams County, when we get to the data itself, um, is not included in the survey only because of the structure. Um, so that, that, that is why, um, when we get the survey data, um, you'll see those six of those. Um, in addition to the actual pay data, um, we also just do a survey of just what other benefits, fringe benefits are offered to council members. Uh, you're not gonna see that as a slide tonight, um, but I believe it was included in your packets. So what does the data tell us? Um, again, on that far left-hand side, you'll see the column of the different jurisdictions. Those are the six, again, Adams County is not included just because of the different structure. And then those following three columns, um, show you the monthly pay for a, the mayor, mayor pro tem and then a council member. Uh, and then as Joyce said, we do use median and we went ahead and gave you two different medians and I'll explain to you why here in a second. Um, the median, if you look at all six of those data points, um, you can see is for mayor, um, two thousand five hundred and seventy-five, uh, mayor pro tem seventeen oh eight and then council member fifteen oh seven. There's a footnote on Fort Collins because they set their pay, personal opinion, a little strangely. Um, they actually, um, I think it's through an ordinance, is that correct?
A charter, actually, it's a charterman.
Um, I think, sorry, that they actually set their council pay based on the median income of their citizens. And so when you look at Fort Collins' numbers up here, especially if you just kind of compare them to the rest, they are higher. And so they're really being based on full-time salaries, um, in their city, which is, which is different. Our council is, is more of a, of a part-time, part-time salary. So that's why we peeled Fort Collins out in a separate line for median, just as another data point for us to use. Um, obviously with Fort Collins being higher than the rest, it brings those medians down as you can see. Um, Thornton, that very last line for comparison, you can then, um, compare between the, the two different medians. Um, and I will say, for the most part, with the exception of the mayor, um, mayor pro tem, HR believes is, is right in line with the survey data. Um, the council member pay is right in line as well. The mayor, I'll go back to that, um, you could say is a little bit low compared to median, regardless of which, which data point you use. Any questions on that slide before I get to the next one? Okay. So in terms of conclusions and recommendations that we came to is that we believe city councils pay is generally appropriate. Um, and that, again, the mayor's salary does, does not reflect median, um, but we would not recommend an adjustment until probably until the twenty twenty-seven election, based on the information Joyce shared earlier. Um, and again, as a recommendation, we would just recommend to monitor that for the time being here for the rest of twenty twenty-five. Any questions? Like, can I address? Yeah.
You mentioned that ordinance from nineteen ninety-nine that says the survey council salary is conducted as part of the annual wage salary. Is that something that has been happening?
Yes.
Okay. So last year, I don't think we got any presentation on it or any, any info, but it was happening behind the scenes.
It is conducted every year. Um, this, this year is new that we've, we've come formally and presented it to council. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quickly before they wrap up, we did get an additional question from a couple of council members that didn't show up here about the inclusion of golf, um, benefits. So we did collect some information from cities, so I wanna just make sure that we share that information as well.
We are still waiting for a couple of data points. Um, for the most part, it does appear that, um, golf is not, um, prevailing in terms of a, of a fringe benefit to council members. Um, we have, we have seen or received some data where there might be some discounts in the pro shop, um, but we can absolutely get more of a, of a summary chart back to council. I would say probably by the end of this week.
And, uh, your pay does need to be established through ordinance, but, uh, your, your more general benefits don't need to be established through ordinance, so you can follow up on that at a later point.
Thank you very much. Is there anything before we go into the executive sessions? All right. I call the order, the special meeting of the Thornton City Council. Clerk, can I please get a roll call of the council?
Mayor Coleman. Mayor Kuntzow. Councilor Ayella, here. Mayor President Bigelow. Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar, here. Councilmember Sandgren, here. Councilor Unright.
Here.
Councilwoman President, honor.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to enter executive session, Ms. Yellico, would you please give an overview of the purpose of the executive session this evening?
Yes, this executive session is to discuss, uh, potential incentive agreement for a restaurant at the southeast corner of one hundred and thirty-sixth avenue and I twenty-five.
Any questions from the council?
Council would like to enter into this executive session. The motion would be an executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four six, four oh two four E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiations and instruct negotiators regarding a potential incentive agreement to bring a city to bring a sit-down restaurant to the southeast corner of one hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue and Interstate twenty-five.
Motion stated.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes. We have another executive session?
Yes, the second executive session is to discuss a potential infrastructure reimbursement agreement for a commercial development at the northwest corner of one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue and Washington Street.
Any questions from council?
Council wanted to enter into this executive session. The motion would be for an executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, twenty-four six, four oh two, four E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategy for negotiation, and instruct negotiators regarding a potential infrastructure reimbursement agreement for a commercial development at the northwest corner of one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue and Washington Street.
Motion stated. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, both have passed, so we are now in executive session at six, sixteen PM.